It being 7:00 PM on Monday, November 8th, I'll call this meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hillman. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Abar.
Present.
This is Cormier.
Present.
This is Hurst.
Present.
This is O'Donoghue.
Present.
This is Valanin.
Present.
This is Schwartz.
Present.
Oh, Mayor Nichols, son.
Present.
Present.
So would that, Pellegrino.
Present.
And Gina DeVito, who do you have?
Present.
All present.
Thank you very much. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of this meeting and may transmit the meeting through any other medium, subject to the reasonable requirements as set by the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the committee through its chair forthwith and all documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair and become part of the meeting minutes. Is there anyone who plans to record this meeting tonight? Excellent. Moving on, open time to the general public. Is there anyone from the general public who wishes to be heard tonight? Moving on to recognitions, Dr. Pellegrino.
So, I received this plaque today. I received this plaque today and it says, "Award of Excellence: Gardner Public Schools Exemplar PBIS", which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, District for Leading and Supporting Your Schools in Implementing PBIS, May Institute 2020, 2021. And I just want to briefly say, we have been invited already. We've spoken at two international conferences, one national conference, and I think the next one we're doing is an international conference as well. But I had to present this award, although, you know, it came to me. It definitely has to go to Joyce West, who has spearheaded the entire process for PBIS, leading our teams, bringing it into MTSS in that fold. So, I'd just like to recognize her, give her this plaque.
This is really a district recognition, and it's been a team effort, and I'm just one of many involved. And we have a wonderful superintendent that has supported us, and we have, in all our presentations, all the participants are like, "Why can't we have a superintendent like that?" So, we wouldn't have been able to do it without him. Amber Cassavant has been huge, Karen McCrillis, Brooke Tenney. Oh my God, there's so many, I could just go on and on. But we have a wonderful team here in Gardner, and they're very passionate. And this is just a great honor because it just, it attributes, you know, to all their hard work, and so it's great. So, thanks, Mark. I'll take it back and I'll make sure everybody gets that awesome.
I knew she'd say that, but to be clear, if she wasn't doing it, it wouldn't have been done.
Congratulations. Next item on the agenda, Item D, the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mr. Schwartz, to accept the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put them out to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E, Subcommittee Reports, Facilities Subcommittee, Mr. Schwartz.
Good evening. Facilities Committee met on Tuesday, October 19th, and I'll just summarize the minutes of the meeting. Mr. Abar made a comment about trash barrels on the tennis courts of increasing.
You have three now.
Oh, we have three. Well, it was, the first original comment was that it was overflowing, needed to do something about to pick up the trash. They did, they removed the full barrel, didn't replace it with anything. And based on his comment tonight, now we have three. So, we have an overabundance of trash barrels, and the area will be clean. I guess the maintenance, our maintenance group did some work on the pillars of the, under the canopy of the middle school. It started, but I don't think it's completed yet. So, I guess I'll continue to pursue that for the next meeting. Another complaint that I had was the exhaust fan at one of the buildings on the high school. The cover has been replaced. And I don't recall if I made a comment about the sawdust collector. Would like to have it painted, but I found out that there were other major issues with it. So, now I guess we have to determine, what are we going to do? Take it out completely, replace it, or do something? We'll continue to pursue that. Relative to surplus property, the Facilities Committee discussed it in its books, I believe, at Elm Street School, to be surplus. And maybe at the end of this, we can, it is on the agenda item. But we recommend the school committee as a whole vote on declaring those books as being surplus. Mr. Hock discussed with the Facility Committee the proposal of Ty and Bond on rearranging the athletic fields at the middle school, high school complex. Mr. Hock submitted a sort of a pin drawing over the pictorial that Ty and Bond provided us in rearranging some of the fields. Mr. Hock submitted their drawing back to Ty and Bond for a relook and a reproposal. And just to share information with you, that proposal is back with us in a more formal note. Haven't had a chance to review it. We'll look at it at the next Facilities Committee meeting on the 16th of November. And it looks like we'll probably be doing something, I hope. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to the Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Lefrenier.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on November 1st. We started off reviewing the expense report. I mean, reviewing the expense report. We had a, there's a shortfall or deficit under the Athletic Director, which will be just a, the shortfall is the city's share. And that'll be transferred by the end of the year into our accounts. There was a teacher's salary also. Shortfall is anticipated there and will be made up from various accounts throughout the year, with the bulk most likely coming from school choice. And professional services, we had a shortfall for a teacher on maternity leave, and we were unable to fill the position required. So, it was contracted to fill that position. So, there's a shortfall there. We discussed also this, what Mr. Schwartz just mentioned about the consolidating of the stonefield grounds over to the Gardner High School. He spoke about that already. Talked about the Gardner High School Landry Auditorium project. The seats will be reuposted, painted, walls, floor, and will be painted, also replacement of the carpet in there. That's all scheduled to do around winter and spring concerts. The Gardner Middle School locker project looks to be on schedule for February of 2022. And also, we discussed the athletic transportation, which every school in the state is having trouble with. So, we have been utilizing Gamma and Wilson bus lines to get student athletes to their games. And that seemed to be working good right now, so that was it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Is there any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to the Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Hurst.
We met on October 19th. We reviewed policies, and we have five tonight. The first read, well, the second read, and one for removal. And I can talk more about those when we get to the final agenda.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on the Policy Subcommittee report? Moving on, Transportation Subcommittee, Attorney Palavan.
The Transportation Subcommittee met on Thursday, October 21st. We initially discussed the current transportation busing overview. There's currently nine 72 passenger buses that the district has contracted for that are used daily with three routes in the morning and three routes in the afternoon for each, one for the high school, one for the middle school, and then one route for elementary. There's four special education buses currently being used. There was discussion around spacing and the fact that with all eligible riders, there isn't much space left on the bus. And for special education, it's very similar. The committee then discussed transportation review for the new elementary school, which will be opening next year, and how the numbers would look considering that the school will be in a different place than the current locations of the school. Mr. Hock had explained to us that it looked like with the changes based on the current student population and location of the new school, there should be enough room, but that's questionable depending on the incoming kindergarten class size and then obviously where the students are located at the time when they have to be bused. That led into us discussing start times for the elementary school and if there could be changes in that regarding the transportation or if we would need to make changes to make sure there could be enough busing and enough time. And then we decided that we would ask the transportation company, NRT, to put together some information for us to review and discuss in late November, early December. And that was it.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on, Student Advisory Board Update, Mr. DeVito.
Good evening. In early October, the Select Choir Marching Band, regular chorus in the Jasmine, had their fall concert, which was successful, had a nice turnout. And on October 24th, the Gardner High Marching Band got bronze during their micro-final performance. Then, the Horrible Spray took place on October 28th with the band going down to Waterford and marching with the elementary kids all in costume. On October 30th, the Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams had their league championship meets. And the boys placed third out of seven, and the girls also placed third out of seven. On October 29th, football had their senior night with a 48-7 loss over Narragansett. Still, a lot of fans attended. We held a pep rally outside the day before on Watkins Field, which actually ended up going really well. Unified basketball has started their practices, and they'll begin their games soon. Over this past weekend, on November 6th, a lot of stuff actually occurred. Boys and Girls Soccer had their state cup games, the round of 32. The girls won 2-1 with a penalty kick shootout. Maddie Lashaw with the game-winning shot. The boys ended up losing 2-0 to Maynard in a tough loss. And field hockey had their state cup, they lost 3-0. And Boys and Girls Cross Country had their district championship meet at the golf course. Girls coming in second and boys coming in fifth. And as well, on November 6th, seniors held a fall festival held in the senior parking lot with games and activities due for the community around. And also, on November 6th, the chorus sang the National Anthem for the Worcester Railers hockey game, and GHS students got in free to the game.
Any questions, comments, concerns? I want to say congratulations to just everyone who was listed on that list. I went to as many of those as I could, and it was just nice to see. While I didn't see the Railers game, I saw plenty of videos of it on Facebook afterward, and they sounded really great. Any questions, comments, concerns on the Student Advisory Update? Moving on to discussion items for new business, Item Number 3330, First Reading of Policies. This is included in your packet for information purposes only. Mrs. Hurst, anything you'd like to say on these?
Well, we had the five policies that we had reviewed. There's some minor changes too that you all have in your packets. Should we just go into those?
Sure.
Next one?
We'll move on to Item Number, barring any discussion or any objections, we'll move on to Item Number 3331, Second Reading of Policies, Votes Required for BDFAs, School Councils, BEDA, Notification of School Committee Meetings, BEDF, Voting, and EBCFA Face Coverings. Mrs. Hurst.
Yeah, so these, we have been over the, we had first reading last month, and I move that we accept the following policies as drafted by the policy committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Attorney Palavan, to send these policies to their second and final printing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put them out to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Item Number 3332, JJICA, Participation in Athletics by Parochial School Students, Vote for Removal of This Policy, and a vote is required. Mrs. Hurst.
After we reviewed the, this particular one, we recommend it to be removed because it's in opposition to the most recent MIAA regulations. And so, I move that we remove the following policy.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Mrs. Cormier. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll just add, not only MIAA regulations, but also the city's insurance policy.
Right, sorry.
It's okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put them out to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Item Number 3333, COVID-19 Update, Dr. Pellegrino.
So, not too much to report, just a few things. First, testing is going very well. Weekly COVID testing is again a very nice mitigation strategy, running very smoothly. The National Guard no longer needs to be with us, and it's being run by, and paid for by the state. So, that's been great, obviously working much in caputs with, let me use the word caputs, with Becky McCaffrey. We have seen an uptick in cases. We had several cases at Gardner Middle School. There were five cases in one classroom, actually. So, we took some extra steps there in terms of communication and allowing parents, if they get a one-call, even if they're not in close contact, we're going to allow them to test and stay if they choose, but they don't have to. So, they can come to school, or if they're nervous about being in that class with so many cases in that particular class, we're allowing them to stay at home without, as an excused absence. We think that's just important strategies because we know that some parents are really nervous about this and very concerned about it. And although we're following the letter of the law, we also want to be cognizant that this is a very stressful time for families, so we're trying to support them as much as possible. Masks and PPE, just to let you know, we have a lot of, I bought a bunch of these paper masks for myself from Amazon. I shouldn't have said wear, but I bought a bunch of these masks myself. And one of the things we have is we have thousands of our own masks that we bought, you know, with district money and mostly through grants and things. Unfortunately, these paper masks, a lot of people like these masks. And so, they're moving away from cloth masks. And what they do is they just come in and they take a mask, then they throw it away, then they take another mask and they throw it away. We're going through tens of thousands of masks at this point. So, what's going to happen is we're going to run out of these masks. So, I will be doing a one-call to let people know that once we run out of these masks, the other masks that we have with the masks that we're not really using, they're not as comfortable. And so, we're going to highly recommend that people start to bring in their own masks again and make sure that that's part of their wardrobe as their children come into school. I just think that's an important piece, and I wanted to let you all know that before I actually send out the one-call. So, and then, there's also been an increase in student absences, but also teacher absences. For example, you know, there was a school, a local private school that closed recently. Several of our parents have a couple of kids at the school. So, what's happened is, you know, with their kids have to stay home, no matter where they are, if they're quarantining or whatever, a lot of times the parents have to stay home. So, we're finding that there are just more of our teachers that are out than normal. And of course, just with the regular, if you have a symptom, you have to stay home, which is the right thing to do. It's very hard for my teachers, but they do it. And that actually just puts more teachers out. So, we're doing all we can to make sure that we are making 100% sure that students with IEPs, that their services are being followed and that their plans are being followed. We're doing everything we can to make sure that it's the least disruptive for students. So, I just want to let you all know that. And that's what's going on with COVID-19.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Schwartz.
How are we doing on substitute teachers, Dr. Pellegrino?
Not great, just like bus drivers or anything else. We've put out several, we have, we've done things like we actually now are advertising on Handshake, which is, which goes out to like 40 local colleges and their career services. We've been, you know, we've posted in the paper. We've done a number of ways to try to reach out to folks with that. The state actually just gave me something where they're partnering with the career services in, the state career services, and we can advertise for free with that as well. We're trying the best we can. But the conference that we went to at MASC, like, it sounds like most districts are having this exact same problem. So, my principals are working with teachers and the union to make sure we have the best plan possible, to make sure, again, it's as least disruptive as possible when we have a teacher out. How we deal with that matters. And so, we have plans now, but we're actually trying to improve those plans with each school.
How long do we quarantine now? Is it five, seven, 10 days?
It depends, it actually, it depends on, well, it's, I believe, 10 days from the last contact.
Okay.
Right, or from when the positive test came through. But that's quarantining, so that's, and that's if you're not vaccinated. There are so many different pieces to this now. I know I'm going to misspeak to walk through the, to walk through it. Whenever there's, whenever you're close contact, the nurses call, they have a, they make a personal call to the close contact. And again, there's a close contact of three feet, which has differences between a close contact of six feet, within three to six feet. So, each time, there are different protocols depending on whether or not you're vaccinated, whether or not everybody was masked in that situation. So, there's so many different variables. It has become a lot more confusing than it was last year when it was just if you're within six feet of someone that had COVID, you're out for 10 days. And it's not that simple, which is, I think, wonderful, quite frankly, for keeping more kids in school, again, using all these mitigation strategies. But I don't think that's as simple an answer as it was last year.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The guidance right now is if you're fully vaccinated and you come into close contact, it's monitor to see if you start to show symptoms. But if you don't show symptoms, you can continue to come to school or whatever.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to Item Number 3334, 2021 to 2022 School Calendar Discussion and Update. Dr. Pellegrino.
So, the school calendar, I've mentioned this to a number of people in some individual conversations, but the school calendar has a full day of professional development in March. However, we also know we are going to have a new Gardner Elementary School, which we're really excited about. But that also means that teachers need to pack up. So, I had a suggestion, and I'm putting this to you all for discussion and a vote, as to whether or not we should take that March date and put that where the current last day of school for students is, which would then move the last day of students to one day earlier. I believe that's the ninth, right? That we move it to the ninth. Allowing teachers, and what it would do is it would allow our elementary school teachers to pack up, but it would also allow our middle and high school teachers to volunteer and help the elementary school teachers pack up and, you know, load things up. Because there's a lot of stuff that people accumulate over the years. So, I just think this will make things a lot easier. And there, you'll notice there are a couple of options. One option moves the March date to the end and just keeps all the other days as they are. Another one puts in another, what we call, I believe, a recess day, basically, a day off. March is a long month, is it six weeks, six weeks straight through? The concern with that is it would put teachers and students that additional day. So, we were concerned about that. So, after talking with union representation and just getting some advice from some parents, we actually did two, I also recommended two half-days, which is really the one that I want to recommend. So, we have two half-days in the latter part of the year. Instead of having those at the, kind of spaced out, I believe it's in May, and there was another one in, what is that?
January.
January, thank you. January and May half-days in March, which would then make it so students get out on the ninth, the teachers have a full day of professional development on the 10th. And that's my suggestion. I think it would really help us in terms of our move. I think it would alleviate much of the concern that teachers have about when they're going to pack up and how this is going to go.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I just hope, and my teachers are all okay with that particular option?
I did speak with, I did speak with the union, with the union presidents.
Okay, okay. Now, I just want to make sure everybody's in the loop and that they're okay with it too.
Which option then? Is that option one?
Yeah, which option?
It would be the one with it. The two half-days move to, move to March. So, you'll see two half-days in March, I think it's the third option?
Yep.
Right, and the last day for students would be on the 9th, the full day of professional development on the 10th of June.
So, it's option two, I believe.
No, that'd be three.
What's that?
That would be option three then? I guess we're all trying to, we have three options in front of us.
Yeah, I got a little.
I believe when you're talking about is option three.
Oh, yes, I believe you had changed it to April 1st, so it wouldn't be two half-days in March. Maybe that's the confusion. One is in March and one is actually April 1st.
Oh, April 1st, that, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so then that's three.
That is option three then.
Yeah, that's why, that's, yeah.
That's what I thought, the one I was suggesting was three, yes.
I move that we do option three on second round.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mrs. Hurst. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item Number 3335, Request for Declaration of Surplus Elm Street School Books. Dr. Pellegrino.
So, Elm Street has thousand, tens of thousands, you know, books at this point that are extremely old and just, you know, at this point, they're, I don't want to say they're worthless because they're books, and I know it's very hard for me as an educator to give up books, but they're actually, they're not, they're not doing us any good at this point. We actually are using this as, you know, a PBIS for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Some of the books that are nicer, we're pulling those out and we're giving them to kids to be able to bring home as prizes for positive behaviors in the classrooms. But in terms of value, there's really, these books are not worth money. So, that's why we're recommending that we move into surplus.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to declare surplus the Elm Street School books.
Is there a second? Motion made by Ms. Lefrenier, seconded by Mr. Abar. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put them out to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Item Number 3336, District Improvement Plan. Dr. Pellegrino.
So, while we presented this, Kathy presented this last, or Dr. Gogan presented this last month. So, do you have any questions or anything that, anything that we can answer? Okay, the next steps will be school improvement plans will be done by the schools. They'll be putting those to the school councils, having a vote, and then it'll be presented with those we're planning on December.
So, you need a vote to adopt this?
So, need a vote to adopt this.
Is there a motion to adopt the District Improvement Plan?
So, move.
Motion made by Ms. Lefrenier, seconded by Attorney Palavan. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item, Item Number 3337, District MCAS Information.
Dr. Gogan will actually be doing the presentation, is that okay? As you know, 2021 was a very strange year, so we thought it was important that we explain what MCAS was all about.
Thank you. The MCAS was administered in the spring of 2021. We did not have an MCAS administration in the spring of 2020 due to COVID. And we had several students who were remotely learning even after the hybrid portion of our year was finished and we went back to an in-person model. We still had many students who were learning remotely. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education decided that they wanted to get a sense of what students had learned, what they had missed, so they wanted to do the test anyways in the spring of 2021. And so, they, they did administer it in person in the schools, and they also had a remote option. So, if you were learning remotely, you took this test in your home. So, just a little bit of. Um, so just a little bit of context before we talk about the actual results was that we did have more students who tested remotely in grades three through eight than who tested in person in school. We also, the, um, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education also stated that because of that, um, the data could be skewed. We didn't have the ability to control the environments of all of the students taking the tests. So, um, they would not use these results to be, um, for accountability purposes, to give us an accountability status this year. Um, so it was for diagnostic purposes only, and even though some of the data is skewed and we have to look at that as we look at the data, it did give us a lot of information that you'll see on the next couple of pages. Um, since they're not giving us a measure of accountability on that particular set of data, they are maintaining our accountability status that we had in the spring, from the spring of 2019, MCAS administration, and that, for the district, is not in need of assistance, uh, which is very positive for us. However, we do have one school that is needed, in need of assistance, and that's Elm Street School. And so we have been the recipients of a grant for the last three years to help us to improve the results at that school in particular, so that we don't have any schools in need of assistance. So I just wanted to give you a sense of what the trend looks like over the last three years. And when I say the last three years, I mean, 2018, which you can see in the orange, 2019, which is in yellow, and, um, the green is 2021. You'll notice to the far right that grade 10 only has two bars, because 2019 was the first year that grade 10 took the next generation MCAS, and, um, the elementary grades three through eight had taken that earlier on. So what we're looking for, looking at here is the average score of our students in these, in these grades, and this is for ELA. So in ELA over the last three years, in some of the grades, you can see a downward trend. In some of the grades, you can see a little bit of fluctuation. Um, but in many cases, 2021, which is that green bar, is lower than the year before it. And so that's really what we were kind of expecting, but, you know, we were hoping that, that it wouldn't be the case. Uh, you are seeing that, that is the case here. The next page is math results and similar. Um, we have grades three through eight, and then we have grade 10. You'll see some dips, um, from 21. One of the things that I, I can say about this data, or, you know, that I can speculate about this data is that, um, English is a very, ELA is a very spiraling curriculum, and so you learn, you learn a little bit more about the same kind of things in ELA year after year, um, so you won't see as much fluctuation. Uh, in the math, you're learning new material and new concepts each year, so you, you would expect to see a, a little bit more of a dip.
Um, did you say, why is there no bar for grade three? The 2021, is that just a?
Um, you know what? I'm not sure that there's a 21 bar for grade three, because I do have results for 20, for 20, and I have them with me, so I could tell that to you. What we did notice in the, in the findings for ELA, and as we looked at some trends, we found some strengths, and this is across all grade levels. Each grade level did have, you know, their own strengths and challenges, but these are the trends that we found across all grades. Um, some strengths that we have in ELA is that we're, we're getting really good at finding and using text evidence, going into the text and finding the evidence that supports, uh, information that we're being asked. The conventions of language, sentence structure and punctuation and grammar, all of those things are language conventions, we're getting stronger and stronger in those. Understanding the development of character in stories, understanding or identifying the main idea of a text, whether it's a factual text, an informational text, or a story. And we're getting much better at vocabulary and finding the word meanings through context when we're reading. The challenges that we're facing are, um, more of the deeper meaning of things, like we can find and use text evidence, but we have difficulty making inferences and really understanding what is that evidence telling us, and what's, what's the deeper meaning? Um, we have, we have difficulties comparing themes across multiple texts. We, we are challenged when we're looking at identifying what's the author's purpose, what's their process, or what's the tone that they're trying to set for, for a text. Uh, we do struggle with essay writing across the board, some of our lowest scores, and analysis of story development, and that goes again along with the author's purpose and process and tone. In math, some of our strengths are measures of central tendency, that's like mean, median, mode, things like that, range. Uh, we're good at probability. We are very good at identification of fractions and proportions, and, um, some geometry, finding the congruency, that means the similarity between shapes and angles. Uh, but we are challenged in trying to understand the operations that we use with numbers and how numbers relate to each other, and, um, in making calculations quickly and fluently. Um, we struggle with word problems, which could go back to some of, some of the issues with ELA and reading. Uh, we have challenges interpreting graphs, we can read the graphs, um, we have trouble interpreting the deeper meaning of the graphs and visual representations of real-world situations. And then in the upper grades, um, we, we are challenged by, um, linear equations, solving equations, graphing equations, interpreting what those equations mean. Um, other than specific findings of what students are able to do, some other general findings that, that we saw in this data was that we do have some subgroups that consistently performed lower than the aggregate in both ELA and math, and this was across the grade levels, economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, and our EOs, our English learners. We also found that students in grades three through eight who did test in person actually performed consistently lower than those students who tested remotely, and it was the opposite in the, in the grade 10 tests. So what we did with this information, this was great information for us, and at each grade level in each school, we're doing a very deep data dive. All of the staff currently are in the process of looking at the standards that are tested in MCAS or in our Lincoln Benchmark Assessments, if they're not in MCAS year, and really trying to determine what are those standards that are being taught, taught or tested each year consistently, and how does that match up with what we're teaching in the classroom, and the sequence in which we're teaching those, so that we have taught those things by the time MCAS assessments arrive. We're also looking at the level of rigor within the questions being asked on, on these assessments to see if our instruction and our expectations for our students is matching that level of rigor and adjusting our lessons accordingly. Uh, we're doing this as grade levels or content area disciplines, so that we're doing this as a collaborative effort, and it's not just one teacher at a time doing this. This is the work we're doing, uh, that I spoke about last month, when I talked a little bit about the MTSS process, and that will be continuing throughout this year. And the next step in that, in that process is for us to really dig into the assessments that we have and the formative assessments, our daily and weekly assessments that inform what it is that our students are learning in the moment, and what are their misconceptions that we can fix them in real time rather than waiting for the, for the larger test and miss an opportunity. So in a nutshell, that's our MCAS for 2021. We're really taking this data seriously, even though it's not changing our accountability status for this year, because I think it's going to set us up well for the, the spring of 2022 MCAS assessment. We're already seeing the results of this work in the classroom, and we're doing classroom walkthroughs, and the teachers are seeing the results from their students already. So we're very hopeful.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Do you know at statewide, the remote test-taking did better than in-person? Do we have any idea about that?
I believe we followed the state on that, didn't we?
Um, the state didn't give us that information, they gave us district information on that only, so don't know, um, from what I looked through, I couldn't find that information. And we can, we can continue to look for that information. Um, I do know that, um, the state, not so much as, not so much about who tested in person or not, or remotely, but what I can say is that's a little bit encouraging, is that we have, um, in ELA, the number of students who are meeting or exceeding the standard on the MCAS in 2019, in grades three through eight, went up from nineteen, from the nineteen administration to the 21 test administration, we increased by two percent, and the state went down by eleven percent. So we actually did better than the state in ELA grades three through eight. Um, and in math, we went down by nine percent in grades three through eight from nineteen to 21, and the state went up three percent. So we, so we were a little bit lower than the state in math. In grades, in grade 10, um, those students who met or exceeded standard, um, we did, we did, um, we went down in ELA by eleven percent from nineteen to 21 in, for grade 10, but the state went down by fifteen percent. So that was encouraging. Um, in math, we went, we went down by 22 percent from nineteen to 21 for grade 10, and the state went, only went down by six percent. So we've got some work to do with math, and I know that that is a heavy focus at the high school level right now.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Very well put together, Dr. Gogan.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, 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 eight, curriculum coordinators update. This was included in your packet for information. Any questions, comments, concerns from the members of the committee? Seeing none, moving on. Item number three, 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 nine, grants administrators update. This was included in your packet for information purposes. Any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to item number three, three, four, zero, special education update. This was included in your packet. Questions, comments, concerns? Moving on, item number three, three, four, one, special education parents advisory council? Mrs. Hurst.
Um, I spoke with Katie Abbott, and, um, they have a, a meeting coming up November seventeenth. We have the information in our packet under Joyce's, um, report, for those of you at home or whoever that are watching. Um, it's building resiliency and addressing anxiety during difficult times, and the presenters are Karen McCullough and Allison Darty, both from the school system here. Um, and then in December, they have, um, supporting children with diverse needs across various settings. Um, you can check on the CPAC's Facebook page for information on all of this. Um, you just have to go into the search and write CPAC, it's S-E-P-A-C, and, um, Katie Abbott, uh, and I have been discussing who's gonna take over when she decides to, uh, move on. So, um, that's, that's kind of work in progress. So I think if we all understand the importance of the PAC and what it entails, that, um, if, you know, we can kind of keep that in mind. Um, it, it is mandated that each district have one. Um, there's, um, I mean, she's, I was the PAC chair before her, we've always had a great working relationship with the superintendents, we've been invited to be at the table for different initiatives, and we collect data, um, that's been important for different things. And it's like being the liaison between the parents and the administration. Um, but, um, excuse me. So I would encourage you to find, the requirement to be the PAC chair is you have to have a child who's on an IEP within the district. Um, and that is it. And there's, um, there's the chair, the vice chair, usually secretary, and things of that nature, so it's not just one person, at least two and everything. Um, so that's about it, and she's, um, if you go to their Facebook page, Gardner CPAC, you'll see Katie's, um, email address and phone number, and, um, she's just an amazing resource.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, concerns on this update? Moving on to item number three, three, four, two, Massachusetts School Building Authority update new school building project. Dr. Pellegrino.
Things are on time, we've actually started picking up the furniture and fixtures, um, that's very exciting. We're also debating some of the technology, technology just changes so quickly. We're talking about a lot of different things, uh, in the rooms, um, and making sure the teachers are getting what they need and that kids are getting what they need. It's very exciting that we're still on time and on the budget that we have, so I'm very excited.
Uh, next, uh, excuse me, any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Dorito.
So when is the school supposed to be finished by?
It's supposed to be ready to go for, to open in September. So, right, Mark? It's a great question. We're always nervous about that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to item H, communications. Dr. Pellegrino.
Um, just, you know, a, you know, a couple of things, I went to the MASC, MASSS conference, um, you know, last week, took away a couple, you know, there were a couple of really good workshops, one on hiring practices, one on collective bargaining, and one on the fiscal cliff that so many districts are gonna be facing when these grants go away, and we don't know what, what chapter seventy looks like. Um, so it was very good, you know, I get to interact, not only with our own, with our own sports, but, um, also several superintendents and just, you know, kind of sharing ideas and thoughts, so it was very helpful. Um, the other thing I have to say is, and, you know, usually, um, I leave the sports to, to gym, but, you know, I have to say, I was really pleased with this, with this season, um, for so many of our sports. We had winning teams in cross-country, field hockey, golf, every, every, like, just about every sport had a winning season. Football had a tough season, but they, again, they won two, they won two games, and I'm seeing a lot of strong athletes who are staying in our district, and, you know, a number of athletes who are coming up from the younger grades as well, so I'm very hopeful for all of our sports. Of course, soccer, um, you know, going to the States, um, and I'm trying to sneak up, can I tell you guys we're trying to sneak out early to go to the game in Tohoto? I think that's illegal, right? Um, but I'm really excited, I'm really excited for this, for, for both boys and girls soccer teams making states, I mean, that's a very big accomplishment, and congratulations to them. Um, that's all I really wanted to share for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Uh, final comments of the school committee, Mr. Abair.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the mayor. Two esteemed colleagues for being re-elected last week. Also welcome to Ms. Layton, who will be joining the committee in January. Also a shout-out to all the people that ran for office, win or lose. They did their civic duty, they spent time, money to participate in what I think is the greatest American freedom. On the backside, 22% of the people showed up to vote, 78% of the people stayed home. And if people complained to this committee, or the council, or the mayor, or anything else, okay, that's a pretty shallow voice to me. This body, the third seat, was determined by twenty or thirty votes between three and five. Uh, there are, as Veterans Day rolls around on Thursday, there are headstones all over the world in this country, the people that gave the, men and women, who gave the ultimate sacrifice to give us this freedom and this special privilege to vote. Slogans, signs, and all that stuff don't govern, okay? People govern. And again, it would be nice if we got a higher voter total, and I'll keep saying that for one more month, and then you'll have to listen to somebody else. Again, as Superintendent mentioned, tomorrow the game is at two o'clock at Tohoto Regional, it's a nice ride now in 1:40, foliage is still out a little bit, take a ride, it's a nice school, it's easy to get to, there's not a lot of, you know, there's places you can park and get out and watch the game. For every game that this team plays, it's a, it's a historic situation. It's our, we've basically, it's a, it's a fledgling soccer program that has started within the last twenty years, and again, is the fact that both of those teams made it. And again, is the fact that both of those teams made it along with the field hockey team and the cross-country team. That's a, that's a great accomplishment by the coaches and the kids and everybody else that's involved. Also, by the time our next meeting rolls around, it'll be Thanksgiving. I wish everybody a happy, safe, and giving of thanks for everybody. And thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Mrs. Hurst.
Coach is always so hard to follow, because he always says such great things. I did want to say to Joyce, thank you for all you've done. And yes, you do deserve the clap. And I appreciate the support you've always given me and the support that you've given Katie with the special education stuff. And I think that, you know, we, we do. We have an amazing team of people here. And I, I, I really do appreciate the people who thought enough of me to get out there and vote. And I got some really nice well wishes from people in the community, and I appreciate that. And thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you very much. Attorney Palavan.
I also wanted to congratulate the mayor and Mrs. Hurst and also Mrs. Ward Layton. And thank you to everybody who did come out and vote, whether you voted for me or not. I agree with Coach. It's, it's such an important thing to do and it is, it is a little disappointing that we don't get more people out to vote. I'm sure there'll be more people who will be complaining, unfortunately. And I, the school building will be open come September next year. I'll make sure that Mr. Hawk is working full-time all summer to make sure that happens. Those kids will be in that building. That is all.
Thank you very much, Attorney Palavan. Mr. Dorito.
Just congrats to everyone who got elected and who got re-elected and brought in. And thank you to everyone who voted as well. It was a good experience, my first time voting, I'll say that much. Got to see all the sports again too, after I read all the stuff. It's a good thing to be in the Gardner schools and just the energy it's been, so.
Mr. Schwartz.
Talk about the election a little bit. I was the one in 3A at the city hall, a long day. It was 5:00 AM till 9:15. There were rushes of 10 or 15-minute increments, but overall, it was a slow day. We have over 12,000 voters. A lot of them stayed home. It's a shame that, as Mr. Abert said, it's a great institution of this country and a lot of people do not exercise it. It's a shame. Relative to the school building, we, as you know, we get our monthly improvement or upgrade reports. Those are fantastic. You put them together and they tell a picture of when there were just trees on top of that hill and now there are three magnificent buildings. It's just great that, that we have such a beautiful building for some nice young kids to go into next year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Lefrenier.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate all the winners in the election. And, and actually, I appreciate and want them to know that it's important to stay involved, even if you didn't win in the election. And just thanking them for even throwing their names in the ring to go for it. And hopefully, they continue to stay involved. There's more elections in two years and, and we need people that truly care about this, our schools, our community. And that's one step of showing how much you care is doing that. When I first ran, it was simply, my son was in school and I was curious about things and things I didn't like. And I said, well, I can't complain unless I get involved. And that's what starts it. And if, if you, you care enough, that's all it takes. Just get involved and you'll learn as you go. So, just want to thank them for doing that. Congratulations to the winners. Thank you.
Mrs. Cormier.
There was a lot of talk about the student athletes tonight and also the band. And I just want to recognize all of them who have been able to come back and, and find themselves out on the fields. I've heard from a lot of parents from elementary school up about how proud their students are to be representing the school, whether it be in the bands or on the teams. And I think that's an important part of their education, of having that sense of belonging. So, I'm so happy they have that back. And specifically, I would like to recognize the Gardner High School band, because my heart will always be there. They started a very small program this year to rebuild. And I watched during band camp, I watched during Tuesday night rehearsals, and I watched their performances. And I'm just so proud of those kids. And I don't have a child on that field. Just so proud of those kids and what they did this year and coming back and getting that bronze at Micah. And I hope they keep building upon that. So, thank you for everybody who helped them do that.
Thank you very much. On my end, I also want to thank everyone who went out and voted. And for me and for anyone else who was on the ballot, seeing, like Coach said, our elections here. And then, it just so happens to be that the elections in my mother's country were this past week as well. And it's night and day from people who are actually able to put their names on the ballot versus in some other countries where you end up in jail for putting your name on a ballot. Where it's just, it's a really great right that many people just take it for granted here. So, I want to thank everyone who did go out and exercise their right to vote. And I also want to thank our election workers and the city clerk staff and all the people who worked the polls that day for putting in the 15-hour day to make sure that we were able to exercise that right. And congratulations to Ms. Ward Layton, who'll be joining us in a couple of months. Just a couple of things on my end that I wanted to hit on. I wanted to thank Karen McCrillis from Gardner High School, who started her new Men on the Move group. I was supposed to be a guest speaker at that this morning, but something came up, so I know we're rescheduling that. But I didn't know about that group until she reached out to, as a support system for some students who may have some troubling situations or be in a certain situation where things just aren't as stable, to try to kind of work together to be a team together and get through it all. So, I thought that was very nice to hear that was going on. For our students and parents driving to Elm Street on Wednesday, we are going to be paving Parker Street from Central Street down to Gene Street. So, just be careful on your commute to school that day. It should be done by the time we're back in school on Friday. Revoli Construction offers Veterans Day as a floating holiday, so they are planning on being out working on Thursday while we have the day off from school. So, it should be done by then, barring any weather changes. But for Wednesday, just be careful on your way to school, because there'll be some paving trucks out there. Thank you to our TV crew. I said at the last meeting that the new TV cameras would be installed, and if you look, they are installed. So, if you're watching at home, you probably have a clearer picture than you're used to. That's why we have the new HD cameras out here. We are still on an SD system in terms of what we're able to broadcast, but it is still a clearer picture than when we were using standard definition cameras with the standard definition channel. At least now it's eight, high-definition cameras with the standard definition channel. I will also be going to the soccer game tomorrow in Tejant, so I'll see you there. But congratulations to the soccer team, particularly for surprising me with 10 signs on my lawn when I came home from work one day. That was great. So, we did make sure to put five out here at City Hall too. And we're working with Dan Fort to see if we can give those to any students who weren't able to get those at their home, to see if they can have that as a keepsake from the season to do that. Just want to point out that this Wednesday at 8:00 AM, the city council's finance committee will be meeting on two money orders that I submitted for the schools. $75,000 to complete the Gardner High Auditorium project and $85,000 to complete the Gardner Middle School locker project. So, those will be going before the council's finance committee at 8:00 AM this Wednesday, November 10th, for a full vote before the council at the upcoming meeting this coming Monday at 7:30 PM in this room as well. So, for anyone who'd be interested in following that, that's where those items stands. And then, the last thing I'd like to bring up here today is that council president Kuzinskas and I very, very preliminarily began talking about the city's inauguration services. Those have traditionally been planned by the mayor and the council president in the past. The city charter says that anyone who is elected has to be sworn in at 10:00 AM on the first Monday in January, which is January 3rd. However, based on feedback we've received, we're weighing out right now to do a official swearing-in at 10:00 AM and then a ceremonial swearing, swearing-in where more members of the public can attend at some evening later on that week. We're looking for input from those who are participating in that, so please feel free to let us know. With that said, Monday night, the council is by charter required to meet. Tuesday night, we are required by charter to meet, so it probably won't be either of those nights, so we can at least say that. But we also are looking for a new location, because Landry Auditorium will not have seats at that time. So, we're working on that, and when we get more information, we'll know for sure. But that's where things stand on that one. And if you do have any preference or any thoughts on one in the morning, one at night, things like that, please do let us know. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, motion made by Mr. Lefrenier, seconded by Attorney Palavan. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.